I'd like to call the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for December 4th, 2018, to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 7th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices. And a slight correction, it will be repeated Friday, December 7th, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 36. For item 23, you are adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.02 of Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code to extend permit expiration from 180 days to 12 months. You waived reading on November 6th. For item 25, you are introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.81 of Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code extending temporary reduction of fee rates for certain fee components in the North Vineyard Station Fee Program. You're waiving reading and adoption, adopting this on December the 11th. And that concludes my clerk notes.
Okay, any comments from board members? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just very quickly, Madam Chair. On item 9, if you could read that, please.
I'm going to have Ben Lamara here. He's going to comment on that in a minute or two.
Okay, all right. I just, yeah, I just want some additional information. I don't have any specific questions. It's just I like to have a plat map of the properties, at least in District 5. I think it was included in the past, and there's a lot of parcels, but, okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Mr. Serna? No? Okay. Would you read item 9, please?
Yes.
Is Ben here?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Notice of intended public auction of the tax defaulted property and resolution authorizing the sale at public auction of tax defaulted property.
Mr. Lamara? We had a request for, from an executor of an estate to withdraw one of the properties, and then Mr. Natoli had a couple of questions. So, you're familiar with the property asking to be withdrawn?
Yes, and actually, we asked that you approve the list as is, and we will contact the owner of that particular property and try to work with them out and try to understand what their plan is as far as redeeming the property.
Why would we leave it in? Why can't we pull it out and address it in the next round?
We could. That is actually up to you. You do have that ability to pull the properties from that list. My concern would be pulling that, those properties from the list, or a property from the list would limit us as far as our ability to also collect on that property.
Well, I thought we had several years to address these tax defaulted properties.
We do. We do.
But how long has this property been? Has it been on too long?
This is the first, actually, this is the first year that this property, this particular property was placed on the list, and we will, you know, most of the time when, actually, in numerous times, when we go through our reviews of the properties, if there's actually a owner that's residing in the property, is that we will actually remove that, that property from the list unless it is act, it is statutory to sell the property.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask you to withdraw that from the list. And can you comment on the exact property?
Yes. So, that property is parcel number 2000130080000, and it's 3628 Bainbridge Drive.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Natoli?
Okay, thanks. And I would support your motion on that, Madam Chair. Ben, thank you again for the information included here, and I know that, as we've had discussion in past years, you've actually, I think, changed the format a little bit and now include those that are, they'd be included on lists, but called them out relative to primary residences. And I see that, again, in other supervisory districts, but there are a couple that are primary residences in, in a couple of their areas. So, could you just take just a quick moment, because it's not really identified here, but I know that you, you make additional efforts as it relates to where it actually is a primary residence, and that's going up for a tax-dated land sale. So, could you just take a moment, what we, what sort of outreach we do, not just with the Treasury Task Collectors Office, but working with, potentially with human, human assistance and human services as it relates to that?
Correct. Correct. And we'll, first, we'll reach out onto the property here. We'll identify properties where there's possibly a residence. We'll reach out to them, and we'll, we'll let them know that the property is up for sale. We also work with DHA and DHS and, and DC, I will get this correct, DCFAS, regarding the, having some outreach to the folks that are on that property, if there are services that they are needed, if they're, and for them to also work with them as far as if they cannot, we have them reach out for their, if they can provide them services as far as if it's living, or food, or et cetera, that, that may be provided. If the property is actually statutory, yes, we're likely going to sell the property, but we do hope that they are able to find services, too.
Let me ask, because again, and each of these, many of them have very unique circumstances. You have, you know, deceased family member in some cases, and you have siblings, who may be adult siblings, some of them may have other issues. Again, I'm just reciting from some of those I know, we've dealt with in past years. And I guess one of the things is, are we able to, in the event that there was desire, obviously, to, you know, retain occupancy, but to redeem taxes, but some folks just don't have the money. You know, they're getting so far behind for a variety of reasons, it may be estate reasons or other. Are we able to, within the realm of things that are available to folks beyond what might happen after the property were sold and they didn't have a home anymore, to assist, are there, you know, on the government side, either reputable lenders, those folks might help to restructure, because some of these properties can be lost for, you know, taxes that may accrue to tens of thousands of dollars, thirty, forty thousand dollars, but the value may be still greater than that. But what happens is that if that gets sold, taxes get redeemed, the county gets its money under the statutes, obviously, but any, you know, proceeds that are left over go to the, but there's no longer a house for them to live in. In today's rental market, today's housing market, so I guess, and maybe, Robin, you could help with this, too, is that, is there the ability, when it comes to the primary residence, and if there's a desire and a willingness to try to structure something that, again, is still a private matter, but, you know, again, I think that this kind of, we go to a great extent to, and to even the questions the Chair asked about, you know, a property that could be pulled off on its first year, but when you get to the eighth or ninth year, obviously, the accrual can be, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars, but it's typically not extreme in the event, you know, there's a willingness. So, what are we able to do under the law to assist folks? Again, you know, either information about lenders, reverse mortgages, those types of things that might be tools, again, that we're not part of the transaction, but that might be assistive to folks that would like to stay in their house, but, you know, just don't have the wherewithal to, to make up to back taxes. And penalties and all that accrues, and penalties and assessments can, you know, far outstrip what the actual taxes were that were due.
This is a complicated question. If you're assuming that this is an instance of someone who is old, has declined, the property is unrepaired, and is...
It could be any set of circumstances, Robin. I wasn't, you know, specifically, yeah. But that's a, that's a good example.
If that's the kind of circumstance, that's not usually a commercially viable candidate for a loan. There are resources for rehabilitation through some of the social services programs, and there, there are elder services that can provide for the care, food, clothing, and shelter of the individual and alternative housing. It really depends on the state of the property.
And this, you know, once we put the properties on the list, I mean, we are actually working with them, and the notifications are going out regarding the property. And, and at that point, at least we have first contact with them. It is four, four or five years, and, you know, hopefully, that the issues regarding the property, property taxes are resolved at that point, but I am not aware of us actually selling a property where a residence has been put out on the street like that.
Ever?
I can't, I'm...
Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, again, I, I don't want to get too deeply into it, because I don't have any specifics here, but I think my general reference is, as we do this each year, is that, you know, notices, and I think there is compassion within those who obviously are the tax collectors, but I just wouldn't, you know, if there's some, you know, other assistance, again, it's still people's making decisions, but limited capacity, sometimes multiple parties involved, and yet, you know, if that is a primary residence for an elder, or for someone who may have diminished capacity of some sort, I think trying to assist in that regard, and whether it's the, you know, somebody that's managing the trust or an estate, I just, I bring that up because, again, you know, we're not heartless. On the other hand, obviously, we have an obligation to everyone as far as taxpayers. So, that was the question I had. And then the other one was, I mentioned earlier, when I wanted to pull this item off, is that I didn't see any plats attached to this year's unless, unless it didn't get printed, and that's always helpful. Again, I only have 10 properties from District 5, but I look at those and try to, you know, discern, and I can tell if something's an eye alternate Ranch or Dover Algro, but to have a map attached, and so maybe I need to make a specific request, and maybe not everybody wants that. That's a lot of information for 100 and, you know, something, probably almost 180 parcels, but I would like to have that for...
Okay. We'll work on it. Okay.
I think one further comment on the Bainbridge property would be, I'm asking you to remove it for just one cycle, to give them time to work their details out. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have speakers on item 26 and 30. Madam Clerk, could you read those in the record?
Yes. For item 26, you are acting as the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento and Board of Supervisors, approval of compensation recommendations for unrepresented Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency employees. And then for item 27, you're back as the board...
30. Twenty-six.
Thirty.
And 30.
Thank you. For item 30, you will be acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, authorization to execute a credit agreement with Woodside in the amount of $1,051,235 for construction of a water transmission main on Douglas Road located in Zone 40.
Okay. Macworthy had comments on these two items?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six and 30.
On 30.
Sorry?
On 30 or 26, which one you?
She just read 26 and 30. Those are the two you indicated.
One at one time?
Sure.
Okay. Mainly, I'm in an investigation on housing, and each place we go into, that pumps us right back to Sacramento housing, and we find some things that somebody is scapegoating, because some violation of, environment violation and construction citation hadn't been fulfilled. Now, the people that's owned that housing, when you're talking about to money, we find out some contractors that SHRA is hiring that's not doing a job. So, whatever you're doing, I have asked about people that's there, that's not making the money, and those, and the redevelopers came into my neighborhood and tore down the light commercial and residential. So, that would deappreciate the property, and when I asked the facts about, why wouldn't it be a moratorium on what this city and county can sell that property for, they bought it for $2, because you bought it off the banks, and the banks bought it, the banks, when they foreclosed, they would have been paying tax, but the city don't pay tax, or the county pay tax, because you're a nonprofit corporation. And you need to educate the people here, not only people of my color, you need to educate people across the board, what is going on in California, about property tax and development, and about our water. When we look at our water, I was told that we'd be pumping water from a engineer in the city, pumping water to the ground. You cannot pump water to the ground in America unless you have a suckhole. You're going to wind up with suckholes. My thing is about the meters. Why would my, one of my houses on the same lot be on a meter and the other one on three fire rooms? Somebody lying. Water going through one meter. How can you put one on the meter and the other one on fire rooms?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Worthy. This item is on compensation.
Somebody got to come out. I've raised this several times.
Yeah. Thank you.
You cannot measure what house uses the most water with one meter.
Okay. Did you, does that con, I guess it concludes your comments. So, I don't think I took the consent calendar, did I? Okay, so...
No, not yet.
With the adjustments on the item 9, I'd look for a motion.
So, move?
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, we're right on time for item number 37. This is the public...
I'm sorry, we have a, we have an off-agenda item that we'd like to hear now.
Okay.
Anya Brooks? And do you have a video presentation?
I do.
Or are you just putting it on the white screen?
It should have been preloaded yesterday.
All right, well...
My understanding, so I don't know.
No, we just have to inform them that it's time.
Oh, there it is. Good morning to the board, Mr. Natoli. I do live in District 5. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
My name is Anya Brooks. I live, I've lived in Sacramento 32 years, 15 of which have been on Hedge Avenue, and we are off Jackson Highway, parallel to South Watt Avenue. Hedge Avenue is a unique county road with open space for wildlife, farmers, homeowners, businesses. It has a Buddhist temple, a Spanish-speaking Christian church, and even a K through 6 elementary school. For my family, we've always worked to make the place we live better than we found it. This PowerPoint presentation is just a quick look at some slides that show you how we found Hedge. Now, I'm not sure, I think, if I just can click through. Okay, Hedge Avenue. And though I come to you with pictures of a problem, I assure you that I have a proposal for a solution. So, these pictures are nothing unique to Hedge Avenue. I realize we are a county road, and this problem is pervasive throughout the county and in Sacramento. But just to give you a little history of what we've started, and where we are today, where we'd like to go moving forward. And that is the front of our property, and you see some signage that we have installed. So, that's a quick look at the past, and then what we've done so far is, we launched the Adopt a Street program. Mr. Natoli attended that in June of 2017. We have a small band of volunteers, neighbors, who we originally thought we'd get out there quarterly and do a cleanup four times a year, seasonal, and we quickly found the reality was that if we didn't get out there about every other month, the accumulation was so tremendous in terms of the eyesores and the environmental hazards that we sectioned off the street. The street is about three miles up one side and down the other. So, we, as neighbors, decided we need to take a section. So, my husband and I, we do from Highway 16 to Fruit Ridge on both sides about every other month. We inform the residents that there will be a scheduled cleanup, so they can put out their orange bags for the county to pick up if they choose to do so. That's where we are now. What I'd like to propose, propose moving forward is something you have in your packets, which is entitled Adopt a Street Proposal, and I would ask today that you would look that over and let me know if the county is interested in working with a group of volunteers, and maybe a person from a county department, or the department itself, or an individual. We know that there are resources as far as looking closely at not just Hedge Avenue, but a place to start. And in closing, I would say that our purpose is to have more communication and resources from the county. We continue to be volunteers, but we'd like to move forward with a more effective plan. We call it Celebrate Your Community, and the way this happens is because we can celebrate if we educate and participate. So, going forward with a positive solution. Start small, as we did on Hedge Avenue. Create a model. Grow the plan one street at a time until it becomes a community-wide event, and finally, potentially, a symbol of pride for Sacramento, which is, after all, the capital of California, our golden state. In closing, I'd like to say Sacramento is a beautiful place, and we're a valley with two rivers, many trees. We sit between an ocean and mountains. I feel that people are ready to be empowered by making this a truly golden state. It shouldn't matter what your zip code is, whether you look at trash and blight. This should be something that we, from all backgrounds, from all cultures, can share together in a process, and come together and organize events. You will also see in the packet in my proposal, I have very specific ideas about events, not just ones in the future, but things that have been happening. I've spoken to people at the county. Michael Penrose has talked to me about the efforts that the county has already been involved in with cleanup areas. I've worked with Stephanie Shanks, who has been wonderful in communicating with me and planning this day. I'd like to work with her some more. Many, many ideas, and I look forward to hearing back from you, because we are a resource, and we are willing to continue to volunteer. As I said before, we, we start small, but we see the potential of this evolving into a more citywide effort, a campaign, if you will, to make Sacramento a truly beautiful city. We can not only, we have the ability to not only prevent the illegal dumping and trash problem from getting worse, we also have the ability to clean things up to a place where people can really be proud of this city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I'm sure you can work with Mr. Natoli and come up with some kind of program that he could introduce.
I look forward to that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just very quick. I want to thank Anya and Ian for coming down here this morning, and certainly, you all had a chance to hear some of the efforts out on Hedge Avenue. I know at the Solid Waste Authority, we've had some discussion about, you know, some of the funding that's, that's there that could assist with illegal dumping, which is, you know, prevalent countywide, whether incorporated cities or unincorporated area of the county. And I would just note that I, it's becoming more and more prominent, not just the large piles of debris and dumped items, some of the things you saw in Anya's slides, but, and I just, it's something that I think we've got to be more assertive on, in our, certainly the enforcement of those that we can enforce on with regards to dumping, but the litter on our roadside is just, it really, I think, it detracts from our community. And so, if, if we don't have the resources relative to county personnel, then I think, you know, enlisting volunteers as folks take it upon themselves on Hedge Avenue is an important component. So, I think we need to do more, and if anybody needs to look beyond Hedge Avenue, there, I can direct you to other roads and streets, not only where dumping occurs, we have them in each of our districts, but certainly where the litter is just, it's accumulation of years of litter that hasn't been cleaned up. And, and so, again, I think that the ideas here, once we can build off, and as you said, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to work with the Brooks and other folks to try to see if we can come something, forward something, and maybe have some allocation of resources that can be supported behind that, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. We have another off-agenda speaker, Dan Adherolt. Not sure if I pronounced that correctly.
I didn't realize I was going to be called so quick. Thank you.
We do have, we have a three-minute limit on off-agenda speakers.
I need two minutes, you guys. I just want to thank you, Suze Peters, because I have been getting your emails now, and I didn't know you were sending me emails about your stuff that's going on in the community, and I appreciate that. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Serna? I have been working around the clock with my crews, cleaning the area, which you know, and the schools around the neighborhood, with my American River Homes crew. I have tried contacting Parker Recreation Supervisor guy and asking if we could do a contract or something where me and my homes crews would keep the area clean and help them out, and I got no response back. I'm trying to be hopeful where we all could work together, because I really like us all working together as a community, and I just want to know if you guys could also help us with trash bags, because it's coming out of my own pocket and people from the next door helping me.
Can I, can I suggest that before you leave, you get Mr. Leonard's business card? He's the gentleman second in from the left there. He's the head of Municipal Services for the county. He'll be happy to put you in contact with the right people at regional parks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got to say. I just want to wish you guys Merry Christmas, and thank you, guys.
Thank you. Dan Adherolt. Next item, please.
Item 37 is the public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Vineyard Creek Number 12 subdivision within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a senior civil engineer within the County Engineering Division, and I will be presenting this item in lieu of Robert Davison, our county engineer, because he sounded absolutely awful on the phone this morning. The Vineyard Creek 12, Unit 12 subdivision is a proposed 79-lot subdivision on Waterman Road north of Gerber, and they are proceeding with their final map recordation. A map condition of approval for this subdivision is a benefit category change in County Service Area Number 1, which provides funding for street and safety light operations and maintenance. The property owner for the property, Lennar Homes, was mailed a notice and protest ballot on October 19th, and the said sealed ballot is in the hands of our clerk of the board in the, in her possession. And so, unless the board has any questions of staff, which does include Russ Childers from the Department of Transportation, we request that the public hearing be open, public testimony or comments be taken, that the public hearing be closed, and the clerk be directed to open the ballot.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? I don't have any requests. Okay, close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk?
So, we have one ballot. The legal owner is Lennar Homes of California, parcel number 06502700040000, and the site address is Waterman Road, Sacramento, California, 95829, and Lennar Homes is in favor of the proposed change.
Thank you, Phil. So, since there is no majority protest, we request that the board adopt the attached resolution.
Okay. Any more questions, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just quickly, so, the interior streets are private streets, as I understand from the staff report, and so, the allocation methodology, obviously, we have a affirmative vote by the developer. Is this consistent in the way we've applied it with other private developments that you then allocated on a, I guess it's linear footage of, by spreading that cost over the entire the, the subdivision and the residential lots in this case? Is that, is that the methodology we use?
Correct, since, like you mentioned, since the interior streets are, are private, so, in order to calculate a way to, to determine the cost, the... So in order to calculate a way to determine the cost, the cost for the streetlights along Waterman Road and Point Setta Drive, which is appropriate for this time of the year, as far as, like you said, calculating a total dollar amount and then spreading that evenly over the 79 lots, so.
Okay. But that is consistent, because this isn't the first development coming that has private streets included in it. So is this the methodology we apply consistently?
Correct. I was looking, if Russ is nodding correct, yes.
Okay, all right. So Russ nods, okay. All right. Well, I don't have any other question unless anybody else has. Happy to move the item then.
Okay. Second?
Second. Please vote.
Did you want me to read in the fill-ins on the resolution, or did they vote first?
Hundred percent.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Section 3 of the resolution has a few fill-ins that I'll read into the record. At the close of the tabulation of the board, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change to benefit category and 0% was in opposition to the change of the benefit category. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I'll start reading now. It'll be 10 in just a minute.
Okay.
Item 38.
We're 30 seconds ahead.
Right. Item 38, Consideration of the 2019 Federal and State Legislative Priorities and Sponsorship Proposals.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Natasha Drain, Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer. You have two staff recommendations before you today. The first is to adopt the proposed 2019 federal and state legislative priorities. The second is to approve sponsorship of a bill to seek funding or reimbursement from the state for the counties involved in the prosecution and defense of the D'Angelo case. Regarding the first staff recommendation, I would like to note that these proposed changes come to you in collaboration with county departments and your federal and state legislative advocates, and they reflect what we believe will be issues in the coming legislative year and reflect the department's priorities. Regarding the second staff recommendation, I've asked Steve Garrett, the county's public defender, and Steve Grippy with the District Attorney's Office to be here to answer any questions you may have about this proposal. I also asked Steve Cruz and Audrey Reticek, your state legislative advocates, to be here as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just on a suggestion on our water portion of this that we, I guess page 12, excuse me, the subheading under State Priorities, is that we have, again, in the affirmative supporting legislation as it relates to a variety of water-related matters. I think it would be important for this board to consider, and I think you can bore down into, on page 12, under Sub B1, that our opposition to the California Water Fix, the proposed tunnel project, is certainly embedded in that. But I think it would be clear, particularly in light of, I think, new administration, I think, you know, what may come of discussions in the future, to be very clear about our opposition to California Water Fix. And I would offer that as a suggestion, whatever, it doesn't need to be anything that's any more than that. Obviously, if that proposal were to be modified significantly, we will continue to take a look at that. But I just, I think it's important that our legislators and certainly the governor-elect are familiar beyond what, having to bore down to actions this board has taken consistently since 2008 relative to principles that involve water conveyance, water usage, and impacts to the delta and its communities. And so I guess I would offer that as a suggestion that, I don't know, Natasha, have any reaction as to how we might incorporate that into this section?
Yeah, you noted page 12. I would also note, and that's an attachment one, and then I would also note page 6 as well, which also has water and environmental policies under Sub A, the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. We may want to add a statement there too, if the board chooses to do that today. To your point about our adopted principles and policies, they have served us well in taking positions on various aspects of the project. We've done that at the Water Board, at the Delta Stewardship Council, at the State Legislature and in Congress. And this board, I believe in 2012, also took an affirmative opposed position on the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. So I think adding a statement of this sort is definitely consistent with your previous actions.
Okay. I'd just like to offer that then, to be included and state our opposition to California Water Fix. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
I just want to thank you for, during the year, about a year ago, we requested that you would provide letters, kind of giving us a heads-up on the county's activities, and you've done a very, a wonderful job doing that for us, and we really appreciate it. Wanted to thank you for it.
Thank you. Good. I'd like to ask Mr. Grippy to come forward. I have a question for him.
Good morning. On the D'Angelo issue, if the state, if we can't gather the money from the state for this prosecution, is there anything in place that the other counties that we are doing the prosecution for would put revenue forward to both prosecution and the public defender?
We've had discussions with the counties on the prosecution side, and I can say, yes, they would be helping us, and we haven't finalized any of that, but yes, some of the counties have agreed. In fact, all of them have. I think a bigger issue might be with the defense part of the case, because the prosecution's been working at this for 40 years, and in the last 15, since they were all tied together by DNA, we've been working together on it. But the defense doesn't have that information yet, so I don't think they've had the opportunity to make those decisions. So it might be, maybe Mr. Garrett could explain what's going on with them, because that may be the bigger cost, to be honest with you.
Yeah, thank you. Public defender, come forward. My question is basically the same. Do you have any ability to contact, to work with the other counties towards paying for the defense?
I've been in contact with almost all the other counties, and I would describe their attitude as helpful and wishing us thoughts and prayers. And they may offer something, but not in the sense of, that I've been able to have an assurance that this is the kind of thing, like a check you could cash. Certainly, they wish us well, and some people may be interested, but come the hard push towards trial and working this case up and paying for experts and the day-in-and-day-out work, they're down there. And I, it would be wonderful if they would help, and I believe there are well-intentioned people that may be interested in doing so, but I don't, I think it's fair to say it's thoughts and prayers at this point.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Natoli, did you have another question?
Yeah, maybe what Steve's there. The, so we have five other counties, all of whom have chosen to file in this county, and the estimated cost, as I, and I was including the staff report, though, for both the prosecution defenses, $20 million, which would then be borne by this county, potentially, at least on the defense side. Any idea with that estimate, somebody put that together, how much of that would be defense versus prosecution? Is it kind of an equal split? Is it more or less? I mean, again, and maybe for both of you, both, Mr. Garrett and Mr. Grippy, I'm curious.
I would say it's difficult to give you an estimate on that, and I think that there have been some estimates bandied about that staff that Ms. Drain has taken and done a projection on. I'm not sure how, what she's calculating, but I think it's fair to say that this is millions of dollars of potential costs that, for the prosecution and defense of the case. And I suppose, I just don't want to get in a position in a public forum of speculating on what costs are, because if the people were to limit their case in some way or another, or we were to win a motion, that could affect it either way dramatically. And so I just don't, I mean, I feel.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I wasn't trying, I just trying to get some sense of it, because if, you know, this, these were, this was unbudgeted. Obviously, we budget for our public defense and for our prosecution. Obviously, the district attorney and our public defender put together budgets. We approve that. It's not an exact science, but certainly nobody, I think, would have projected that, you know, with what's been rolled out thus far, that this county is going to take on the entire responsibility or the lion's share of those costs. It's great that, you know, that there's an arrest been made, and there'll be, you know, obviously, justice will be served through the courts, but $20 million, and even if that's spread over a year or two or more, that's a lot of money, because it's all additive to what your office and certainly the district attorney's office are, you know, are responsible for. And I get, you know, I think legislatively, obviously, we need to pursue that, but the event that doesn't come through, and it might be that this board needs to communicate with our colleagues at the, you know, in the other counties, if we haven't already done that, to ask, you know, certainly if they're talking about on the prosecution side, but on the defense side, it's not, you know, well wishes don't pay the bills. And I get it, maybe they're relieved that they don't have to, you know, defend this in their particular county, but to me, this is a big deal, this is a big dollar item that can have an impact on our general fund, obviously.
Sure. I think Natasha can probably work something out that way. We send a letter from the board chair to the other affected counties, or the CEO, and/or the CEO, something along that line.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so will you work out the letter for us?
Yep. Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Drain? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is to be adopted, so need a motion?
I would move, noting the addition as outlined.
Yes, the water addition and the D'Angelo addition, yes. Please vote. Mr. Kennedy, second.
Thank you. Unanimous vote. Would you like to take up your nominations? Okay, so that would be item number 42.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so you are continuing to, December 11th, the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to January 15th, the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. Your first item is the Adult and Aging Commission.
I would like to nominate, to reappoint Joseph Samora and Maria Padilla Castro to the Adult and Aging Commission and continue the remainder to December 11th.
Analog Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate Sean Woodland.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Please continue to January 15th.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Please nominate, to reappoint Erica Geralmillo as a community member and continue remainder to January 15th.
Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District.
Continue to December 11th.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate the reappointment of Richard Griffin and continue the remainder to December 11th.
And Supervisor Frost?
I do not have, I do not have.
Want to continue to December 11th and?
Continue to December 11th, please.
Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board.
Nominate John Kelly as the Board of Supervisors appointee.
And Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, nominate Caroline Lucas.
And Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Brian Richter.
And would you like to continue the remainder?
To January 15.
Okay. And then we have Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission, Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, I would like to nominate the overly qualified and terribly talented local Sacramento artist and educator Judy Kennedy.
Okay. And then we have the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District.
You get the arts and I get the mosquitoes here. So nominate Susan Maggie as the Sacramento County Appointee.
Okay, and that would conclude your nominations.
Okay.
And we just have three more minutes.
So we have, we're ahead of schedule by three minutes, so we will be back at 10:15. Walk amongst yourselves. Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, take your role, please.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
She's here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, so we're going to go back to item 42 for the nominations. We're looking at North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate Brenda Ewing, please. Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay, next item?
Okay, for item 39, Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Power Inn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project, La Creta Drive to Florin Road. I do want to make a note for this item and for item 40, you will need individual votes for each of the properties. For item 39, I do have a request to drop property number 2, Ernest Lu Jew and Linda Fan Jew, trustees under the Jew Living Trust dated June 2, 2015, and Cherry Kwong Phan and Ves Wising Ma, trustees of the Ma Family Trust dated August 4, 2012.
Peter Hannan?
Yes, good morning, Chair Peters and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, program manager.
Wait, I'm sorry. I need a motion to drop that particular property.
Oh, you want to do that now? Okay, I'm sorry.
Just curious, before you vote on that, why is it being dropped?
We received signed documents from the property owner late last week.
Felted. Great, okay.
Could I have a motion then?
Move.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And so now you are hearing a property, Ed Wong and Dora Y Wong, trustees of the Wong Family Revocable Trust, under Declaration of Trust dated September 24, 2001, Three Star Properties, a canceled limited liability company and farmers market number five, a suspended corporation located at the southeast corner of Power Inn Road and Florin Road.
The owners have been able to deliver clear title necessary to conclude the acquisition. Today's resolution of necessity is an anticipated imminent domain action will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Notice of intention to seek approval of the resolution of necessity was mailed to the property owner by registered mail and regular mail at least 15 days prior to today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or the property in question, I'm available to address those questions for you. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, no questions. I just want to thank staff. Mike, this has been a long time in coming, and I want to thank you and Dan Schuman as well for all the work. It's been hard to cobble this money together and taken a lot of effort, and we've never taken it off the ball. It seems like, you know, a small project in the big scheme of things for a county the size of Sacramento, but I guarantee we are saving lives by voting on this today. So, thank you very much. And with that, I'll move the project.
Chair Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, had a speaker on this item. I'm so sorry, I thought it was the next one. Ali Nadeemi?
Yeah. Good morning. I just want to make it clear that we have no opposition to the eminent domain. Our concern was more on compensation, and we've initiated that project, so please move forward.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Now, next item.
We have to wait.
10:30.
Yes.
We have a nine-minute recess. Yeah.[114.22]